Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for December 10th, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on our website. We'll come to order at 7:01. First item on the agenda, Lakeside Residential Discussion, Zoning versus Overlay Districts, Solar Bi Law, and Dover Amendments. Attorney Adam Koster is here to assist us with that.
That's right. As you may recall, we have been working on a new bylaw. We got a grant that we've been using with CMRPC to help us draft a zoning bylaw that would allow dwellings that are on pre-existing non-conforming lots in certain areas of town, primarily Wellon Lake Terrace and other waterfront properties that might have smaller lots. The intention is to provide relief to people so they don't have to go to the zoning board of appeals every time they want to do something on their property, whether it's put a shed up or, you know, an addition on their house or a deck, because these are non-conforming lots. So, the idea was to provide some relief to them, and we're trying to figure out the best way to get from point A to point B with this bylaw. So, one of the discussion topics has been, should the zoning bylaw be either a wholesale zoning district, a new zoning district in these areas, or should it be an overlay district? So, we've struggled with that over the past couple of meetings, and Adam gives some presentations for Citizens Planners Training Collaborative for this specific issue. So, we thought it'd be a good idea to have Adam in and let the board understand the differences between the two.
Excellent idea.
Yep.
Adam, would you like to come sit at the table with us?
Sure. I brought my computer along. It's a material electronically that I maybe share. So, I know I've met most of you tonight, and some of you I've met before. It's been a few years, I think, since I've been out here, probably. A couple of years, anyway.
Huge generous.
So, we had a few projects back in the day, and I was out here, I feel like, every month, but it's been quiet. So, as Bill had said, he asked me to be here tonight to talk a little bit about overlay zoning. I've been involved with the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative for about five or six years now. Some of you might have taken their courses or attended their presentations. They offer a fall workshop series, and then they have their annual conference at Holy Cross every year in March. And I've been presenting for them. They contacted me back in the spring, and they said, you know, we provide the same 10 or 12 or 14 workshops annually across the state. We'd like to add some new topics. Do you have any recommendations? So, I gave them a series of recommendations, and they said, "Great. You want to draft them?" So, one of the topics was zoning with overlay districts. And so, they asked me to prepare a PowerPoint presentation and so forth, all of which I was hopeful I could share with you. And then I contacted them. They said, "No, that's our work product, so you can't share with anybody." But I can obviously talk about it because it's general knowledge. It's information that you can find in other secondary sources. But, you know, Bill gave me a little bit of context because the purpose of me being here isn't to talk for two hours about overlay districts. It's about talking specifically to what you're trying to do here. So, the concept behind overlay zoning is to find a less traditional route, maybe a simpler route, possibly an easier route in terms of public participation, in terms of support at or in advance of town meeting, to utilizing more traditional zoning. So, with more traditional zoning, if you decide that an area of your community is not properly zoned, to describe what Bill just explained, an area where maybe all of the properties or most of the properties qualify as pre-existing non-conforming lots or structures, in other words, nothing really complies with current zoning. And this happens in many communities. There are consequences that applicants, owners that want to do most anything with their lots have to come before planning or zoning board of appeals. For minor additions or even slight exterior modifications, they need zoning relief for those things. And I experience it with great frequency. My office is in Newburyport. I would say three-quarters of Newburyport is zoned in such a way that none of the houses on any given street comply with zoning. And their zoning board of appeals agendas are three pages long, and their meetings go on for two and a half or three hours, and they meet every other week. And that's just the reality of living in those communities. The alternative would be, they could rezone these areas of their community in such a way that the properties were not, are not pre-existing non-conforming properties, lots, structures, and they wouldn't require this extraordinary relief. You can do that through traditional rezoning. You can take all or portions of a Residence A or Residence B or Commercial A or Commercial C district and simply rezone it. The challenge there is, you've got to get community support for that. You've got to get build support in advance of town meeting, and then you've got to explain to the town meeting, "We're really doing this for your benefit, voters. It's not going to adversely affect you, even though we're changing everything that you currently know about the zoning that applies to your property." That works in some communities, and in some ways, that's, in some instances, that's the best way to go. The concept of an overlay district is, you can say to the public, you can say to the owners of these properties, "We're not doing anything to change your underlying zone." If you're in the Residence A district today, you're going to continue to be in the Residence A district once the new overlay district is adopted. So, nothing that you can do today, you'll be prohibited from doing tomorrow. It'll be status quo, except that we're going to have this additional layer of zoning on top of the Residence A district, or more appropriately, portions of the Residence A district. And we're going to allow for greater leniency. We're going to reduce minimum requirements for lot area, reduce minimum frontage requirements. So, overlay districts came about really because of zoning required in those areas where natural features didn't allow for easily demarcating a boundary. So, we saw overlay districts used at the start, and they're used for all sorts of reasons now. We see them in the affordable housing context, and we see them in transit-oriented development areas. But it started with areas around lakes and around ponds and around other sensitive environmental areas or priority habitats. The idea being that it's very difficult to say, following property boundaries, "We're going to draw a line behind all these various properties and say that all of these properties that we've just outlined or highlighted are within a new district." It's easy to say, "The overlay district is going to be measured 200 feet back from the outskirts of the lake, or the pond, or the environmental resource, or the habitat as we've designated it on a map." So, that's how overlay district kind of start. It's now been utilized, not only for that purpose with respect to lakes and ponds and other water features or environmental features, it's also been used in those other various areas. So, yours is a difficult case because you're sort of integrator. On the one hand, you've done an excellent job identifying the areas in purple, which are properties primarily, as Bill's described them to me, that are pre-existing non-conforming.
Indeed.
So, you could simply say, and I mean it when I say simply, you could simply say, "We're going to identify everything shown in purple on that map as a new Lakeside Residential District. We're going to remove it from the existing district." I think you said, Bill, it's all in the same current underlying district?
Yeah, it's RA.
Okay. So, we're going to remove it from the RA district, and we're going to place it into the LR or Lakeside Residential District, and it'll be that simple. Lakeside Residential will have less stringent requirements with respect to lot area, with respect to maybe setbacks, frontage, other bulk and height requirements, and you could simply do that. The alternative would be, you could determine that you need to place an overlay, choose to place an overlay district in those areas within the RA district, and the overlay district zoning would include those same sorts of provisions.
So, just a quick question. So, there's sometimes a conflict between the two different, you have an overlay and another zoning district between the two. Which one to follow, and sometimes it's not clear, even, you know, in Dudley and other towns that I've come across. So, it causes more problems where they have a business overlay and a residential overlay, and they're like, "Which set of rules are we going by?" You mentioned, you know, the fact that, you know, involving the citizens and their involvement, them awareness of changing the zoning district and stuff like that, you know. So, that's where a lot of this inputs come from, is from the ZBA members, you know, people who live up on Witten Reservoir, as well as Wellon Lake, who live there, and, you know, they're the ones facing the burden of this and stuff like that. So, you know, I just see, I see the problem with overlays, where towns literally come across just more and more problems of misunderstanding of what an overlay is, where it's used. To your point, you mentioned, you know, overlays are for like affordable housing districts, or for ACFERS, you know, that's commonly where you see them, for, you know, DEP, you know, watershed protections and stuff like that. But, you know, for zoning over top of zoning, I see where it causes more legal issues and stuff like that.
Wouldn't you just tell us pros and cons?
Yeah, so that's a con. And we've got, you know, in the CPTC seminar that I give, we've got, you know, pages in our PowerPoint presentation to talk about pros and cons. One of the cons is that overlay districts, particularly if they're not drafted correctly, can be confusing. And towns that like the concept of overlay districts sometimes tend to overuse overlay districts, and they pile overlays on top of overlays, and that's the challenge. I had occasion to review for a private client of mine just a few weeks ago, a district that my client said was an underlying zoning district, and I read it and said, "Gosh, it's structured like an overlay," but it didn't call itself an overlay. It didn't say in the introductory provisions that this district is superimposed over the underlying district. It didn't say if there's a conflict between this district. Surely enough, as I read through it and as I did some investigation, it was an overlay, but it was so poorly drafted, the reader didn't know that. And it was not clear whether it was supplementing or supplanting the underlying zoning district requirement. So, you've got to be very clear. I don't think that in and of itself is necessarily enough of reason to not utilize overlay districts in the right circumstances, and I'm not saying that this is necessarily the right circumstance. But I think that if it's drafted clearly and if the public is educated, you want to be very specific early on. You want to have an applicability section that says, "This overlay district is superimposed upon the underlying districts. In the event of a conflict between the provisions of the underlying district and this overlay district, the overlay district..."
Supersedes.
Supersedes, correct. Or you want to provide an option. So, you know, there's two types of overlay districts. There's those that are meant to add greater restrictions, like watershed protection. Watershed protection overlay districts don't open the door to greater development or more intense development. They restrict development.
Restrict it.
But then you've got, then you've got Chapter 40R, smart growth overlay districts, and those are meant to open the door to new possibilities, allow for more dense development that wouldn't be allowable pursuant to the underlying district. Doesn't take away any rights that somebody would have if their property is zoned RA, and they can build one or two or three single-family homes there, but it gives them an opportunity to potentially build 50 residences there if they follow the requirements of the overlay district.
Well, that's one of the things we've gone back and forth on, is the fact that we are going to put restrictions in it, that you still have to meet the Title V separation, and, you know, I mean, our water health, you know, not just the fact that it's a 5,000-square foot lot, but you still have to meet the water and sewer separation.
And setbacks that are not going to put people on the property line.
Right. Because then the argument also came up where, if at some point, you know, we could be long gone, they do bring in water and sewer, now you could be opening up Pandora's Box.
No, no, no. That if you have private water, private sewer, you'd have to meet separation.
I understand. And that's where, I don't know which one would be better off, where this is where we're looking at it today. But in 20 years, would you have more clout either as an overlay or as a zoning, as far as what goes on?
It wouldn't matter. It'd be certainly easier to rescind the overlay, because you're not having to reimpose the previous zoning, right? You could simply eliminate the overlay. But there's also going to be arguments then, that our owners of properties or our properties within the district grandfathered then, because the overlay did apply at some point. So, it gets challenging, and it's interesting that, you know, the world of land use and zoning law is so small that I tend to have repeat conversations about these topics. I was in a meeting last night, and we were discussing this very issue of the interplay between land use and planning law, as imposed by planning boards and zoning boards, and Title V requirements and what the board of health wants to do or is required to do. And the fact that, you know, in this other community that I was representing, they had adopted a new accessory apartment bylaw. They thought it was excellent. It was going to incentivize the creation of accessory apartments. And then the board of health said, "Yeah, but all of these locations where you've allowed them, now you're allowing for the creation of additional bedrooms, and none of these properties have systems..."
Intensifying the...
Right. The system, they have three-bedroom systems, not four or five-bedroom systems. So, great, you've made it really easy for them to get their accessory apartment, but now they've got to rip up and replace their septic system, or we can't sign off on it.
But in either case, whether it's the overlay or the district, can we not have language in there that says that if public sewage is brought to and/or water, that that would, I mean, it would then take conservation out of the whole situation, right?
Board of Health, you mean?
Board of Health, yeah.
If you have one or the other.
And I think that's your...
But we should put that language in there.
The issue came out where, on some of these lots, like we're saying about being able to subdivide them, right?
Yeah.
That's the problem. Where right now, that can't happen. But you run in water and sewer, or it's this small lots, some of these lots a little bit larger than that, then you can start subdividing everything, because you don't have to worry about something. So, what language or which avenue would be best to prevent that thing?
I think that's what the language we're looking for.
Is it a date? Is it a date?
That's a language we're looking for.
That's the problem that we're running into, where, is right now, sure, it's great. It is what it is. You can't do anything. But down the road, you could start subdividing all this stuff. And now, instead of 50 homes, now you've got 200 homes.
Right. So, your current requirements are 90,200 feet of frontage, and you're looking to reduce them to 5,050 feet. But the issue is, maybe that applies to 75% of the homes within the new district, overlay or otherwise. The other 25% might have 10,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage, and so they could be subdivided.
Can we add language that if the lot was not established prior or, you know, or after this time, you know, through an A&R process or whatever, that they cannot be subdivided? Is there any language we could put in that?
So, you can. So, you're on a risk, and it's...
That's the meaning, in more ways, it's more of a question.
Yeah. So, the risk is, and it's cited in the agenda item you see here, that I said, uniformity requirements, spot zoning, presumptive validity. So, this is an issue that relates to overlay zoning, but even if you pursued a new underlying zoning district with these reduced requirements, but you included a provision where you chose a date of adoption and said there can be no further subdivision, the question becomes, are you treating similarly-situated properties in a similar fashion? And the uniformity requirements of Chapter 48, Section 4, require that. The case law that has followed requires that. I'm sure you all are familiar generally with the concept of spot zoning, where you single out a property or a group of properties for either more onerous or more beneficial treatment. It applies to overlay district zoning, although I will tell you that in all the years that overlay district zoning has been used, there's not a single case where the overlay district has been invalidated on spot zoning ground. So, that's a potential benefit to using overlay district zoning. But the other red flag for potential violation of uniformity is when you begin using dates, because now you're essentially distinguishing between similarly-situated properties based only on a date. Now, I think if it's drafted carefully, it can withstand a challenge, because there have been challenges. There's case law where Bill Ricker, I think, had a provision for years, in fact, that may still be in their bylaw, where they provided more generous treatment than Chapter 48, Section 6, with respect to pre-existing non-conforming structures, but it was based upon the date, a particular date. The lot had to exist on that date, and if the lot was brought into creation afterwards through subdivision or otherwise, it didn't benefit from those same additional protections.
So, you're saying the district, the district might have a better lockdown on that with language after the adoption of this date, the lot should be, you know, frozen into any subdivision?
Yeah. I mean, I think you could do it, you could do it in the underlying zoning or an overlay. I don't think it's stronger or weaker, one versus the other, but you could work language like that into the bylaw.
But I think we want, didn't we all want to be super clear on that?
Yeah.
That was a fear factor going down the road, not necessarily today.
You too, right? We don't want anybody subdividing. So, regardless, overlay or otherwise, I'm just saying.
I really don't understand why we're doing this at all, beginning this.
We're going to be...
I mean, I don't see it as the best interest of the town. I think the zoning is okay the way it is. I've lived in town all my life. I've seen the reservoir with all these camps on it, and now all of a sudden, they're all year-round homes. They got relieved from zoning to build their home there. I'm sorry, what you have is what you have. If you can't fit a garage on there, you can't fit a garage on there. If you can't put a shed up, you can't put a shed up. I don't know why we have to go through all this.
And you will have neighbors. If we have them, they're going to come out, and some will be in favor. Some are going to go, "Wait a second. I don't want that house any closer than it is now." And there's going to be both sides of this.
So, let me ask a question, and I don't want to, I don't want to muddy the waters here.
Thanks a lot.
So, you've been going in the direction of either a new zoning district or potentially an overlay, whether it's underlying or overlay. It's going to look something like that. Is it safe to say that with respect to these properties that are roughly 5,000 square feet with 50 feet of frontage, you've captured most of them along these lakes and water bodies in purple? Are there a lot that lie elsewhere?
There's probably others throughout the town.
Cedar Street over there has bigger properties, very big properties, but it's not included in that.
It included because they were two acres, and they met current zoning and stuff like that.
Or near current zoning.
So, I guess my question is...
So, there is downtown areas, like Village Residential, which is a 20,000, and there's some lots down in the Village Residential, you know, that's in the yellow, you know, the yellow area, that are 5,000 or 4,000 square foot lots and stuff like that, that are, you know...
Those are largely sewer.
Yeah. They're all sewer-based and stuff like that.
And the only reason I ask the question is, another potential approach, to go back to the Bill Ricker example, would be, rather than adopt a new underlying zoning district or adopt an overlay, if your objective here is to provide some relief to individuals who own lots or homeowners who own houses on lots of 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage, so they don't have to come to you or to your zoning board of appeals for every little thing they want to do to their properties, you could adopt a provision that mimics 48.6. And I know you've got non-conformities already addressed in your zoning. You could provide more generous protection. The legislature's been very clear. The courts have been clear that Chapter 48.6 provides the baseline of protection. Municipalities are free to grant greater protection. So, you could identify lots with 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage, which already benefit from the protections of 48.6, and grant them additional protections, indicate that they don't require even the relief that 48.6 mandates. They don't require special permits or findings if certain things are being done. To go back to the example of Newburyport, and I know well because I do a fair amount of private work there, Newburyport allows the building commissioner to sign off on all sorts of minor modifications to non-conformities without having to go to zoning board. Their agenda's still three pages long.
There's a little history on that, right?
No, no, but like, you know, I mean, I think the concern is that, you know, the way you can move this forward without actually putting people in conforming, you're kind of burying like another policy inside of something that, I mean, we already have an overlay district with ACFERS and everything else in there. So, we're going to run across this, do we consider all bodies of water? So, we're going to be able to overlay of an overlay.
No, no, that's not true. There's no overlay of an overlay. So, Lakeside Residential would be an overlay.
If Lakeside Residential was an overlay, you'd have an overlay of an overlay.
No. Our protection doesn't go that far in any of these areas. Adam, I was going to raise the question. The goal, as I understood it from the board, was to provide relief for the existing dwellings that are occupied out at these areas, okay? And the concern I have is, with a zoning district change, would be unintended consequences. So, are we going to create the possibility for new subdivision, or are we going to possibly take away some status that some of these people might enjoy under, you know, the zoning Act? So, those things that we're not focused on are what my concerns are. And then we could open Pandora's Box, if you will. And that's why I was more inclined to go with an overlay district, where we specifically identify the qualifiers, keep the underlying zoning the way it is, and then identify qualifiers that, standards that you have to meet for the Lakeside Residential to apply.
Sure. So, it's not, it's not a rezoning in the sense that you've got replacement zoning in all these locations. You've got the overlay, and the overlay may not apply to what you see in purple. It's going to overlay everything you see in purple, but whether it applies depends upon the particular that you identify in the zoning bylaw.
Correct.
Sure.
And that would be the biggest thing, is how that's written. That would be the art of a language when that's done. And that could take some time to make sure, cross the Ts and not the Is, and hopefully you don't forget anything.
But no town meeting.
No, you still need it.
Either way.
Yeah, no matter what.
Or we could do nothing, and have people go to zoning for relief, as they do now. The whole big can of worms we've opened up, why? So, just so somebody doesn't have to go to zoning to get some relief? Is it worth all this hassle?
Well, yes and no. I see both sides of it. Where you're, you could be a neighbor of mine, and you're in one of these lots, right, and you want to put a shed. I don't have to go in front of anybody and build a shed. But you're next door, and you have to go pull teeth to try to get a shed put up, because you're in the wrong area. You're non-conforming. So, it's just acting as where you can put up a shed by changing some of the requirements on your setbacks.
And you're elected to help to move the town forward and all that.
So...
I see both sides. I'm not starting moving it forward. You have a process now, and all the stuff we're talking about, I don't know, is it going to be any better? They can go to zoning for relief.
Yeah. I know. I see both sides of it. Yeah, I see both sides.
Seems like we're heading down this path and not really coming to have a good grip on what'll happen or how it's going to happen, and what will be better, and...
This is, yeah, this is just a big fee, a front fee, going through the ZBA and stuff like that, not just a time, right? You know, and then there's appeals and decisions and, you know, cases.
Right. So, I've heard all sorts of justifications for it, and I can appreciate that perspective too. So, I'm not, the decision is yours. The arguments that I've heard for adopting some sort of zoning that's particular to these sorts of properties that would otherwise be non-conforming is to eliminate what is perceived as sort of case-by-case determinations by some sort of adjudicatory body, typically the zoning board. As you say, there's the logistics of it. Applicant has to pay an application fee, has to show up. If the neighbor doesn't want something done, and maybe that's not the way things work that often in Douglas, but in other communities, I can tell you that neighbors appeal everything and anything. I have one community, I probably have 50 cases with my name on the books that are land use matters currently pending because neighbors appeal everything. And so, it eliminates that by allowing through the tool of zoning, some minor modifications without the need for a special permit or other form of relief. And it eliminates that sort of case-by-case negotiation. You hope that your zoning board is consistent. I don't know your zoning board well. You hope that it's consistent, but I know in some communities, I work with zoning boards, and I appear before zoning boards that aren't. And so, you and me, we've got similar properties. They're a quarter mile apart. They'd both be in purple here if this rezoning occurred, and yet somehow you got the permit and I didn't.
Right. Yeah, but that's, that can be an issue. And, yeah.
It all depends on the board.
Yeah. It's always an issue with what boards do, you know.
But it shouldn't be. It's not fair. It's not fair in U.S. taxpayer, you know what I mean? Like, exactly what you said. I mean, why should he get it, and I'm down the street, and you won't give it to me? Because you don't like me? You don't know if that's going on or not. But, you know, it can happen. I'm not saying that, but it's a gray area.
I guess, could you provide us some language, I guess? Because that's what we're looking for, is the two biggest pieces I think we've dealt with is, you know, not just the which way to go overlay versus, you know, zoning district and stuff like that. The biggest thing was, was the language around the water health requirements being met before it's considered a buildable lot or anything like that, or, all right, that and the subdividing. Those are the two things we didn't, I think we were firm-nosed on and or wanted something around, no matter what direction we go in, whether it's an overlay or a zoning district.
And the one thing I, the one thing I hadn't appreciated before tonight, frankly, before Bill said it, is the concept that, you know, you've got, you haven't simply highlighted or colored in purple lots that are 5,000 square feet with 50 feet of frontage. You've got some in there that are 10,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage, and some that are 15,000 square feet, 150 feet of frontage. So, if the concern...
Some that are much larger than that.
Right.
And the goal was that, was because they weren't even the two acres and 200 feet of frontage, meeting those requirements and stuff like that. And this was really just the initial pass of going around there to say, "Hey, we don't want to quote 'spot zone,' so let's go around and tag all the properties that are in that area that can be easily identified that are small." Some, or quite a few, who have gone before the ZBA for requests of decks and additions and everything like that. And so, you know, where they're paying, again, to the point of relief, where they need relief, where they're not going to go forward to, you know, they did the front deck, and now they want to do a side deck, and it's now $2,600 in fees to go get ZBA, you know, permits and approval before you put the deck on.
You know, you got to also consider, I mean, I'm not sure how the assessors work things down there under the hall, but if you have a five-acre piece, let's say, now do they start counting up those lots as potentially buildable lots because you have the frontage and area now?
Well, no. I think we get the language. That's the way we look at the language.
The language where it can't be subdivided, so it stays what it is.
This is what we want, is the language around it to lock it down.
Existing structures.
Yeah, existing parcels and existing structures.
And I think that, although you may not know it, I think that collectively, you're advocating for the overlay district route versus the underlying district route, versus underlying zoning, because what you're hoping to achieve is much more difficult to do when you're recreating or rezoning with new underlying zoning in the entire area you see in purple. Because how are you restricting subdivision? Owners of property have certain rights pursuant to subdivision control. If you have, if you've got adequate frontage on an existing way, you can submit an A&R petition to the planning board, and the planning board can't deny it if it determines you've got the adequate frontage as the way it sits.
With overlay, you can stop that.
You can't stop the subdivision, but you can certainly not extend the protections that you would otherwise extend. Correct.
So, the border health issue between the septic and the well is one of the most paramount obstacles unless this public comes in. And people do have lots of 5,000 square feet and... And people do have lots of 5,000 square feet and across private roads, they have another 5,000 square feet which they needed where they keep their septic tank because of the distance issues. Does that, if somehow they, does that become a building lot? You know, like a raw piece of 5,000 square foot land on a private way? Does, you know, they're probably not going to get the distance separation, but is that open again?
Not if we structure the overlay district the way that you're describing it being structured. So there's two pieces here. One is what lots are we providing protection to within the overlay? And then the second is also including some provision within the overlay district zoning that refers to something beyond your jurisdiction. And you can't determine as part of your review or the zoning board's review, which is the fact that it's all subject to board of health.
So it has to be like primary houses, initial primary house. Go ahead.
Yes, I think so. But there are always engineering ways to achieve what you're talking about. You could have a common septic field located on a remote parcel. But, but Aaron, this, this could happen, okay? So you could, you know, carve up 10 lots. They could all go to one septic system that's in backland somewhere, you know.
Right, but, but neighbors do have, you know, where they have their septic tank on the other side of a private. And all of a sudden, where they're going to put another house on this 5,000 square foot, and that cannot happen. I mean, it'd be in the court in a matter of minutes somehow.
Well, adjacent parcels and stuff like that, common ownership. But I think that's what you're running through that, I mean.
So, so I've got a good sense as to what you want to achieve, and I think it can be achieved. It's just, we've got to be very careful in how we craft the language. It needs to be reviewed by this board, it needs to be reviewed by, by Bill. And we've got to ensure that not only practically doesn't work, but that it ultimately achieves your objective. And it is, is foolproof because.
Right.
The, the problem with zoning is that once it's adopted, it's adopted. And so circumstances change, but the zoning doesn't unless you go through that same zoning amendment process. So it's, it's a fair thing to consider, well, what happens if in the future? Maybe you have no plans to sue where any of these areas are right now. But what happens if 20 years from now you do? The zoning's still going to be in existence unless it gets rescinded between now and 20 years from now.
Or another, another town has it and they allow you to tap in, you know, and then that happens.
Yeah.
So you never know on that aspect of it, you know.
So, yeah, I, I think that's our biggest thing is, is those two issues that you've highlighted. I mean, the separation with the water health and then the, you know, not allowing lots to be.
But, but to be fair to, to Mike and I, definitely for one of these things happening, the proverbial can of worms, you know.
It's, it's relief.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's well intended, what we're doing, but.
The overlay sounds like it's definitely the way, more practical way.
I think the overlay district in light of all that most of you have said can better fit your needs. I think it's easier to structure an overlay and achieve what it is that you want to achieve than it would be to do with the underlying zoning. Of course, the elephant in the room is, do you want to do it at all? I know you've had a couple, a couple of you have said that, you know, maybe you don't want to open the can of worms. So again, I don't have a, a horse in the race here, but if, if it's the desire of the board to, to try and put something together and work through it. It's not going to happen overnight. I'm happy to work with Bill. You know, Bill knows the, the specifics of these lots and where the larger parcels lie. And he certainly knows what it is you want to achieve, so we can work together to put a draft together.
So we do, we do have an agreement with CMRPC to, to draft something. But I would say regardless of what we do, we send it through Adam.
Yeah, yeah, no, actually, you know, I mean, and if you, you already have initial language or anything like that, it's definitely worthwhile. You know, I mean, that, that, that was the pieces we were missing. And we knew, we knew we were going to have to address those in any article or anything we move forward.
Well, I'm happy to work with CMRPC too, I've worked with them in other communities.
Yeah, that's what we need.
Okay.
I think we need to give them a closer direction though, I mean.
Well, at this point, I think maybe we table a vote if we're going to take a vote. I know Tracy's not here and she's very, she's very into this. So I don't know if we want to vote tonight.
No, I don't want to vote tonight.
And the other reason Adam came in tonight was to briefly talk about, I know we were talking about solar bylaws. And how the Dover amendment may have a role with the solar bylaws. We're talking about maybe making certain size solar arrays, the larger ones. Require a special permit process and have by right a certain threshold under that size.
So I attempted, not knowing how much time we have, because I was primarily asked to come to talk about the overlay district zoning. So I attempted to put into the agenda here a little bit more substance on the topic of solar bylaws. And the challenge with solar bylaws is there's not a lot out there. So, you know, we, we talk about the Dover amendment. So Dover amendment provided protection for educational uses and religious uses. Then by way of separate legislation, there was the protection offered for agricultural uses. Well, that was all back in 1950, and then I think agriculture came in in the late 50s. It wasn't until 1985 or later that the solar energy system protection was worked into chapter 48, section 3. So it's much newer. And you can see here in the agenda, I've, I've provided a couple of bullets. Just compare the language. So agenda item number four. The protection for religious and educational uses says that no municipality can quote prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use. Of land or structures for religious or educational purposes, okay? Prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use. Then you've got agricultural uses, and they use, the legislature in its infinite wisdom decided to use some slightly different language. Instead of saying prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use, it said prohibit, unreasonably regulate, or require a special permit for. Well, the good news is, despite what the legislature did, the courts have generally interpreted the religious, the educational, and the agricultural exemptions. Consistent with one another. You can't prohibit in any location within your community. You can't unreasonably regulate. You can't require a special permit for these sorts of uses. They're exempt uses. And you see that in your zoning, it reflects, you can put a church wherever you want to put a church. You can put a public school wherever you want to put a public school. Well, then they came up with the, and this is agenda item number one, the language in 48.3 addressing solar energy systems. No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate. So it doesn't talk about restricting. It doesn't talk about requiring a special permit for. So the sense, and this is what a lot of secondary sources say, the sense is that the solar energy system exemption is meant to be not as extensive. Not as broad an exemption as education, religion, or agriculture. That's the sense. The problem is there are six total reported cases that even reference the solar energy system. I checked again this morning, which I haven't missed one. Six total cases that have been reported. Four of those cases, or three of those cases, they were, they were decided on motions for summary judgment that related to issues of standing. And nothing to do with the actual substance of the exemption. So you can see here, I have cited to the only three cases that exist that give us any guidance. So what we have is these three cases, item number six on the agenda. And then we have item two on the, excuse me, item three on the agenda, which is me referencing this DOER attachment. Which I also provided to Bill in the email. I don't know if you have.
Yes.
And you can see the DOER, there are more caveats in the two-page attachment than, than you can imagine. Because DOER isn't quite short either. Back in 2014 when this, when their guidance document was written or today. They're not quite sure either the scope of the solar energy system exemption. But what they've said is, it seems pretty clear that you should be allowing by right. And it probably falls within the scope of the exemption. It doesn't sound like it's an issue for you at all. Roof mounted, small and medium scale, solar photovoltaic installations.
Which we need to identify what that is, small and medium.
Yeah.
Very important.
That's what, that's what got us, because we looked at another town's small. And it was 1,200 panels, you know, covering.
Covering an acre, acre and a half or something.
No, nine acres. 1,200 panels. That was their small.
Right, so we need to.
We needed to find out.
And there's, you know, you can, you can do it by panels, you can do it by. By kilowatts, which is most frequent, but then you got to make sure you're comparing AC to DC because there's a difference between the two. So you just need to be sure that your.
Three-phase, two-phase.
Nameplate capacity and whatnot. So, so there are different ways to, to differentiate between the small, medium, and large scale. Let's talk just about the large scale now because it sounds like that's the focus, and that is the focus for most municipalities. Once you define what large scale is, can you prohibit them? Can you allow them everywhere by special permit? Are you obligated to allow them in some locations by right and in other locations by special permit? The standard is unreasonable regulation. So my fear would be, I can answer the first question, you can't prohibit them everywhere, right? My fear would be that you place them on special permit in every location, and then you deny the first three that ever come before you. Because special permits are discretionary tools. You can deny special permits. It's not like a site plan approval, generally not discretionary. That'd be my fear. And then the, the third developer says, well, enough is enough, challenges you, you get to court and they say, okay. So it doesn't say in the, in the bylaw prohibited, but it's a de facto prohibition because effectively that's what they've done. They placed it on special permit and then every applicant that comes first, comes forward gets denied. What most communities have done that have chosen to adopt this sort of zoning is either allowed it everywhere by right. And then placed it on a site plan review to provide some mechanism to check them.
And that's what we're doing, we've been doing, right?
Yeah, it's just a site plan review.
Or they've determined that, well, we're okay with them in most, we're okay with them in our industrial district, in our commercial district, in our mixed-use district. But we don't want them in our residential district. And so they prohibit them, prohibited them in the residential district and they've allowed them by, by special permit. Or ideally by site plan review in all the other districts. I think by at least allowing them in some districts by right. It, it, not, I don't mean, you know, not subject to any review, I mean through a site plan review process. It provides you with some cover, because if you look at these cases, the Briggs case, in, in all these cases, the court determined that it's not unreasonable regulation. If you've allowed it in some locations, just because you're disallowing it in other locations. Unlike agriculture, unlike education, unlike religion, where you couldn't disallow it anywhere.
So that, that flies, restricting what area you could have them.
We think so. We think, we think so. There's no case that says it flies, but there's no case that says it doesn't. And these three cases involved circumstances where it was allowed in one location and disallowed in others. And the court generally said, as long as that's not considered to be unreasonable regulation, which is based on the facts and circumstances of every case. Then we think it's okay. The court didn't say, no, 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 we're invalidating this at, at first glance because you prohibited it in one district and you can't do that. So the courts so far have not given solar energy systems the same protection that they've given religion, agriculture, and education.
So, so the 2020 solar regs, they're for reimbursement, only allows it in an industrial or commercial business area. So cannot be in a residential for its reimbursement rates.
Okay.
So that kind of solves that problem for us of, I think, I think we, we were more concerned with allowing it to be the wild, wild west in, in the residential area. But the, the reimbursement rates is, you have to qualify whether you're in a commercial or business or industrial area to get reimbursed now.
And, and I will tell you that I'm, I'm comfortable saying to you that you can consider prohibiting it in certain locations. Because you're not, you're not going to be an outlier. This is being done across the state. Many, many other municipalities have adopted zoning that has prohibited it in certain locations and allowed it in other locations. You could be the first one that's challenged and taken up to the SJC, can promise that. But I, I can tell you that, and again, look at these cases. The Briggs case is a land court case. The Duso case is a land court. These aren't even appellate level cases, these are trial court cases. The Waller case was also a land court case. So we've got three cases that exist out there that, and they're all trial level cases, all from the land court.
But our three, the ones that we've allowed under site plan review have been in, you're talking about right versus site plan review. Have been in the residential.
Well, site plan review is pretty much by right.
By right. It's covered everywhere. But, but also the, the ones that we've approved in the residential areas because they're, the solar reimbursement rates were covering those areas. They're no longer covering them starting next year, so there's nothing.
Oh, the negotiations that went on.
It's not yet.
No, for the next, the next three years.
Yeah, I understand.
It'll cover for the next three years and after that, yeah.
Well, they're moving away, you know, less and less, even the roof mounts. The roof mounts are dropping from 35% reimbursement rate down to.
Oh, the SRECs, the SRECs have just disintegrated.
Correct, everything else is just dropping.
We even noticed it under the, the SREC 2. There's a drop from 420, 440 to 300.
Yeah.
And they're claiming, you know, these companies are agreeing. They want to say they want to go bankrupt.
That's where, um.
They're going to renegotiate.
That's where Mary Beth did hers in the back, is because their reimbursement rate was, next year is dropping down by five points.
Well, this is.
And then it's like another eight points.
Yeah.
So.
And we haven't, we haven't had anybody come in for any residential. Rural, rural agricultural have been the three biggest ones we've had down here.
Yeah, and we've got the other two that were already established. The Bosmas and GUs. And those GUs would be in village residential and Bosmas in village.
Oh, so, uh, commercial. GUs, commercial, and, and the other one's industrial.
Yeah.
Is there a distinction in some of this stuff? Addressing size? Roof mounted, it'd be allowed maybe, whereas standalone, you know, whatever they're called, standalone units not, or I mean, is that?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's, there's two divisions. There's roof mounted versus ground mounted. And then amongst the ground mounted, most communities have differentiated between small, medium, and large. And that's what DOER uses. So I only sent you, just so I don't overwhelm you with info, I only sent you a two-page excerpt from DOER. But if you just Google, or I can send them to you, DOER solar energy systems. There's three or four guidance documents, including a couple of model bylaws that show you, you know, they give you potential definitions for these various terms. They show you how to differentiate between small, medium, and large if you choose. They're only examples, other communities have chosen, you know, to, to differentiate between size. Most of their examples, I will tell you, are for by right because, and you've already qualified. But a lot of communities are seeking to qualify as a green community by virtue of adopting as of right zoning for solar facilities. Communities that didn't jump on, on the wind, the wind issue and didn't have that, or didn't jump on the manufacturing research facilities for, for purposes of renewable energy. Are utilizing the opportunity to, to do so through photovoltaic installations.
But two-phase streets are limited to 10 kilowatts, this is the way it is with national grid. I mean, they cannot allow more than 10. So those aren't, well, we're not really talking about those, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions quick for Adam before he picks up?
And if you review the materials and have other questions about solar or about overlay zoning, just get them to me. I can answer them.
I did have one question.
Okay, can I have your name and address?
Yep, Brian Leveque, Kearney Road. So I did have a question in regards going back to the Lakeside Residential.
Yeah.
I know we're trying to provide relief for people. I have mixed feelings about it. I live in one of these areas. I've been through the zoning board of appeals on multiple occasions and I can tell you it's a nightmare. My biggest question right now is why are we trying to push 5,000 square feet when those Title V laws will not provide. Any relief on the new Title V setback requirements of 100 feet? You can't fit on a 5,000 square foot lot, you can't fit a septic system on a well. So I understand, I guess my question as somebody who lives there is, is there a way that we could provide the, the relief for the existing people that are there? That are pre-existing nonconforming? But at the same time, maybe reduce those ridiculous RA setback requirements for undeveloped areas. That could potentially still encompass maybe 15,000 square feet versus 5,000 square feet. You're basically saying either only the existing houses are going to get relief and nobody else will, or we're not going to do anything. Or you're saying everybody's going to get relief, but you really don't have relief because you can't meet Title V laws, which I think makes it confusing. So I guess my question is, as a resident who deals with this, is there a way that we could almost put two different categories within? Whether it's an overlay or an underlying district where existing structures now have these setbacks. But new construction could potentially have reduced from what it is existing, but greater than what the, the.
The goal is not to.
The goal for who though?
The goal is not to create new construction, it's to provide relief to the structures that are already.
But there's parcels there that, you know, could be.
We don't, we don't want, we don't want.
But who?
The zoning to chase.
You don't want that, but maybe other people do, is my point.
Well, then, then that would be voted on at town meeting if that came up, yeah.
You know what I mean? I'm, I'm just looking for you guys to think about all possibilities. And we don't, like Bill said, we don't know all the possibilities. We don't know what pops up, and you said it too, I mean, down the road from this. But I just want the board to consider that as well. There are other factors involved that you're not even considering.
We'll take it into consideration for sure.
So just for consideration, if, if within these areas you have one parcel that is 90,000 square feet and has 200 feet of frontage. And they're there.
Yeah.
Do you want to reduce the setbacks for that? I mean, otherwise it's fully conforming.
Right, it's fully conforming and you can do what you want.
Right, so, so the, the other, so you could potentially be creating more lots again on that, but.
Yeah, you want to do that though.
And, and to Brian's point regarding the septic, there's always a way around the Title V issues. You could do a package treatment plant. And, you know, if, if, if the folks out at that area started all having contaminated wells, something would have to get done. So in doing that, you know, you provide a solution, it'd probably become a town issue. And.
That came up once before years ago about, about a central septic system for that area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, with the, the backland, I think at the top of Burchell Road was supposed to be actually a treatment plant out there. With the, the backland, I think at the top of Birchell Road, was supposed to be actually a treatment plant out there.
We own eighteen acres of.
Correct, that was supposed to be the treatment plant and something like that for that area.
Hasn't even.
But, but, but I think, I think until we get the language back from Adam and stuff like that, you know, of the things, the two biggest things we want to make sure.
One of my biggest concerns is that we don't start creating.
Correct, correct, until we get the language back.
A whole bunch of small lots. If, if, if you want to give relief to the people that live on these lots already have non-conforming structures. But, but to create lots to be able to build these type of structures further on down the line is not in the best interest of the town.
The goal, I think, when, when we talked about this, wasn't to create additional lots where someone's got a twenty thousand square foot and starts shopping out.
We got to look at the possibility of somebody bringing that up and that happening at a end.
Get the language.
That's what we have to look at. We have to have all those answers.
I guess that was my question for, for Adam was is there a way, just a consideration, to do that where you can increase, and I'm not saying five thousand square feet, but I'm saying fifteen, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand square feet, where somebody could pop a house. Maybe they do own three or four lots in a row.
If you have twenty thousand square feet and two hundred feet of frontage, you have a conforming lot already.
Oh, you don't because you don't have ninety thousand square feet that the RA requires.
I mean, I'm saying, yeah, I mean, if you have, if you have the two acres and the two hundred feet of frontage.
I'm not saying, nobody's got two acres. There's nobody in the territory.
You can't subdivide it and you can't stop creating lots.
I'm asking from Adam, not from Ernie, is there a way to put language in there that can reduce that? I'm just asking from his professional opinion. Is there a way?
That's not, that's not the goal of what we're trying to do.
Okay.
If, if it were the goal, it could be accomplished. I mean, the challenge that I foresee here when you're trying to treat properties with structures on them differently from vacant properties and you're trying to apply a different set of bulk size, dimensional regulations to these two different categories of properties within the same district, I see a potential challenge under the uniformity clause. Which is why I had said earlier, another potential approach would be to just simply in lieu of crafting a new overlay district would be to provide grandfather, greater grandfather protection to existing structures, improve lots. Can that be accomplished through an overlay? Sure.
Under section six.
Right, under forty-eight six. But, I mean, can, can you, can you do it if, if your only goal was to provide the protection to lots with structures? Can you do that with an overlay? Sure. But I think trying to, trying to treat, you know, different categories of properties, improved versus unimproved, five thousand square feet versus, between five thousand square feet and ninety thousand square feet versus more than ninety thousand square feet, and to try, to, to treat all of those within the same overlay district, but to treat them all somewhat differently, I think you're just sort of asking to, to be challenged.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Sure.
Yeah.
We'll be in touch with you again.
Yeah.
Always good to see you.
Likewise.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Public hearing. Rebecca Genelk. Genelnic.
Sojone.
Segalnic, yeah. Sorry, it's helpful.
DeMarco and Robert N. All right, application for accessory apartment special permit, one twelve Maple. And I'm going to read the public hearing notes. In accordance with the Donald Douglas accessory apartment zoning by law and Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Rebecca and Robert DeMarco for an accessory apartment special permit. Property location is one twelve Maple Street, assesses map one ninety-four, parcel two, Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven-thirty P M. In the community meeting room, Municipal Center, twenty-nine Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the application may be reviewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. This is my community chairman, Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now over. Are you doing the presenting or do you?
I, you know what, I, I don't really know what I'm doing. I apologize. I guess I'm just, I'm asking the board to please renew our application permit. We had one when my mother owned the property and I lived in the apartment and then I had a baby and I needed more room, so then I bought the house from her and I moved in the house and now she's in the apartment.
Yeah, she came before the last meeting.
Right.
Yeah, it was pretty tough. Discussed it all.
Right, and my understanding is nothing's changed from, other than the occupants have swapped. So, um, the original one did lapse at, at the time they made the property transfer, which is why we required another filing. We did reduce the fee, so it's a typical renewal fee, so it's fifty dollars. And aside from that, everything's the same, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so, so it seems pretty procedural. We did draft a decision, it's in your to be signed for.
Fifty, but it's eighty? We said, we said last time that it.
It was eighty, so it's not fifty dollars.
No, it was fifty.
It's waived the application fees, judging the renewal.
We said last time that it has to be a new application, not, not an extension.
This is a new.
Yeah, it's a waiver of the fee.
Because of the change in people, yeah.
Except for the notifications.
The base fee, the base fee is not waived, but, yeah, the notification is another eighty dollars on top of the fifty dollars.
Oh, yes, well, butters need to be notified, yes.
Butter notification, had to be done.
And the advertising.
Just so we're clear on the fees.
Anybody have any questions on it? Someone want to make a motion?
Motion to accept. Yeah, we're making a motion to accept the accessory apartment application for one twelve Maple Street for Rebecca.
Genelk.
Genelnic?
Segalnic.
Genelnic.
Segalnic.
Segalnic.
It's a hard G.
Like, like Stephen Segal.
One twelve Maple Street.
Second.
Yep.
Okay, well, maybe by Mike G., second by Mike, Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Let the record show that Tracy was absent from the vote.
Yep.
Maria will be in touch with you.
You're all set.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
With every hearing.
Oh.
Yes.
No, there isn't public.
Yeah, we have, we have, yeah.
Yeah, they're closed public hearing.
Yeah, we have to, we still have to close public hearing. Usually we close public hearing and take the vote when we can do it. So, motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for.
Motion made by Les.
One second.
Second by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, the motion carries.
Paul's going to be on point a little bit more.
I've learned a long time ago to not.
You have a point of order?
No, no, you guys are perfect.
He usually helps us out with that.
We missed it. We usually, we usually do the, we usually close the public hearing and do the vote.
Mike was going to do it either way.
Have it all set and done.
Unless you can't take the vote.
Let's be the Bruins game on.
Yeah.
While the meeting's open.
Don't we do them both?
No, you can do it either way.
Okay.
Cool. Yep. All right. A and R Land, David Cahill, Ledgestone Road. Anybody here for that?
David Cahill.
Oh, David's here.
I didn't see you back there.
Fell asleep. Are we getting it on air?
We are.
Posits, excuse me.
Yep, yep. Go ahead.
Spread them out.
Spread it out.
Okay, there's, there's two frontage lots and backland lots. They got kind of big, so we did, um, two separate stamp plans.
There's a ledge shown.
You have the mylar's too, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give it a thing.
All right.
This is, uh, Ledgestone Road off of Northwest Main.
This is not where you live?
No, I live on Lakeshore.
You live on, that's.
Yeah. But this has been my, my, my stand since the seventies. And I bought thirteen more acres, I don't know, ten years ago, whatever. And now we're, we got one lot here, two and a half acres, one, two point six. There's a total of.
Yeah, this one's just over ninety thousand square feet. Um, and the funny thing with this one, Lot One, um, if you look at definitions in our zoning book, you can't include the right-of-way in the lot area, um, even though it lies within an easement on the property. So the ninety thousand square feet has to be beyond that right-of-way area. The, you know, so, so with that, that took a few times back and forth with the engineer because he was under the, he was including the easement area.
Yeah, you can't do that.
So.
And, uh, I think there's like six hundred and something feet frontage to these two lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then about two and a half acres. The road is in excellent shape.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Top, it's right at the top, yeah.
So, the, the, there's already existing house there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, so the road is actually deeded to this property?
It's a private.
Easement.
It's a private.
So, so currently.
Well, half of that.
Currently, there are two lots, the red lot and the green lot. That's what exists now for the property. Okay, so those are being subdivided into three lots. And, and yes, the right-of-way does lie on the private properties. So anytime it does, and right now, not, right now it's just on Lot One, um, that is deducted from the total area.
We get that.
Okay.
So what's the access under this backlot?
So, so the issue is, okay, um, as we look at these, uh, there's some steep side slopes, ten percent. And that's why I asked Maria to ask you guys to go out and take a look. So Lot Three virtually has the entire frontage on a steep side slope and then a portion of Lot Two.
Yeah.
They all meet ASHTO requirements and otherwise the plan meets the requirements dimensionally and presentation-wise. So the only issue is that slope.
What's this?
I asked a question about.
It's in the reg.
Yeah, I think, Bill, Mike and I have the same question here.
Where's parcel A and where's parcel B?
Parcel A is not a buildable, separate buildable lot.
No.
Parcel, it's just backland.
That's just going to be all backland?
That's just going to be backland.
Mr. and Mrs. Lombardi.
To which one?
So the one in your packet.
This one right here. This one right here.
The one in your packet was the original.
The checkerboard.
Parcel A and what's parcel B on this side?
The stripes is upside down.
Yeah, that was after the first plan came in, which has changed dramatically. This is what the current plan looks like.
So, so, see the green, this, this thing here is here, this road is here.
That's the green.
I mean, I know right where, I drive by it every day. It's on this back.
Yeah, it's just not a, we do that, it, it's not a separate buildable lot.
I don't understand, why is this checkerboard?
It is.
There's no checkerboard here.
Yeah, I don't think.
There's a separate plan for the backland.
It's just not a buildable lot.
And Mr. and Mrs. Lombardi, the butters, and they're.
Down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, they're going to purchase the, all this backland.
They're going to get on the backland soon.
Good.
That'd be a nice chunk.
It's eight acres.
Yeah. Comfort.
Nice in there and.
Yeah. It's like directly across from, over on Oak Street.
Yeah, yeah. So, so basically it's three posses, the backland parcel which is not buildable.
Then we separate it all and enables you guys to get that backland property and splits it all up that way there.
Yeah, so that Mr. Milson Lombardi want to purchase that land, the butters.
It's a parcel.
It'd be nice.
So they have a bigger backyard.
Parcel A is the back one.
Nothing like a big backyard.
Yeah, the back.
The red one.
Firewood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, that plan right there.
Yeah, it attaches there.
Spent a lot of time because, uh.
Basically, it's dark, Mike.
Some of those boundaries with last, yeah, last people that saw them were cavemen. They had so much time trying to find them all. And they did find them all, but it just went way overboard.
Yeah, well, you got to find, you got to find the best.
Yeah, but like I said, the cavemen, the last ones have probably seen them.
Yeah.
Yeah. The issue about the, uh, what was it, the steepness of these?
Yeah, the frontage. So, so the regulations, the local regulations require them to identify access-limiting features. So the board has commonly held ten percent is, is the threshold for a potential constraint on access. So I'm just pointing out that the plan does show slopes in excess of ten percent, almost entirely on the lot. Three frontage and probably half, not quite, maybe a third of the frontage on Lot, Lot Two.
So, was, is that, I think it's.
Was the total coming down or is it just, is something they address?
Is it going down from the road or up from the road?
What, the, the land?
Yeah.
It's pretty level with the road, but, but, you know, the road has a slight.
No, no, the, the road and then the frontage on Lot Two and Three, is that going up or going down?
It's pretty much Lot One, Lot Two.
Yeah, Lot Three.
Yeah, that one?
Yeah.
Which way is the slope from the road, up or down?
It's, uh, pretty much levelable with the road. It's just a slight, you know, ten percent slope in the road.
Because the road goes down.
Yeah.
All the road dips.
The kind of, the property kind of rises.
Follows the road?
Huh?
It follows the road pretty much?
Yeah, kind of, same elevation in the road pretty much as it's a property.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, uh, the width of the road's thirty-five feet here and forty over there.
Yes.
So it does vary.
Yeah, like I said, there's always, there's like six hundred and something feet for these two lots.
Remind me to tell you about that.
Well, I, I mean, I, I know roads just.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the main.
It's a private way.
Right. All right.
It's been maintained by the people down there.
It's all maintained by them. How many, how many houses are down this area?
There's one, two, three buildable, I mean, that are built on.
Yeah.
Down by the pond.
Yeah.
Then there's probably ten houses on the pond down there.
Yeah.
Small lots.
Yeah.
That's upon the smaller's.
No.
This is a manchot.
Manchot.
Yeah, that's right.
Part of the purple. Okay.
Going down the other way.
Hardly access.
Ledgestone.
But we've got a major, we've got a forty-foot wide road going off of Northwest Main.
Call it major.
It's been there for, it's been there for a hundred years.
Yeah, Ledgestone Road is, is a private road, but it's been there for.
So it would be down in the green area?
Up, no, up in here, up top here.
Which one's paved? Is Ledgestone paved?
Yeah, it's all paved.
It's paved? Okay, because I know one of them is.
Yeah. Lake Shore.
Be built up.
Lake Shore.
Yeah, Lake Shore is, Lake Shore is.
Crushed concrete, right?
Makes more sense when you.
Oh, that's, uh, from Hillcliff.
Okay.
That's ground-up ledge with all the filings and.
You need all the slope things.
It's like concrete. It's amazing.
Okay.
Yeah.
It has stone dust.
I spent the fortune on it.
That's what I do.
It has stone dust on it.
Some of the people around here, they're, too much sand in the material and there's too much lateral movement.
Yeah.
So, so my excavator guy.
Okay, cool.
It was incredible how much you put there.
Yeah, I put down that.
Yep, let's go.
All right. All right.
I have a problem.
Any more questions?
Okay.
Sure, I'm making a motion to endorse A and R plan for David Cahill for Ledgestone Road.
Second. Made by Mike G., second by Mike G. Any further discussion? Oh, second by Jake. Second by Mike Jake. Second by Jake.
I heard you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Oppose, abstain? Motion carries.
This stamp.
Is it all in? Think they're on R now?
Put it in one spot, and it was very bad spot.
Nope.
These guys oppose. It's supposed to be one Mylar and one?
Two page A and R.
Oh, that's right.
Two sheets.
It's too big to do on one page.
You got Sharpies in there?
Yeah, I mean.
Can we stamp while you write?
You're gonna come in.
You can't, you can't stamp. No, the paper. You can't stamp the paper.
Two Mylars.
You can do both sides. Mike, you wanna start? Did you drive out your stamp? Yeah. That's the proper word.
Sounds over the going.
Could use some material. It's good to see you, guy. I've got a lot of work to do.
Hey, hear any, Mikey? I didn't get a chance to stamp.
Right back to you.
Okay.
And I need to recuse myself from this again.
There's two of them, right?
Is there two of them?
I don't know. Is there another one over here?
Yeah.
Jake, you wanna come over here and sign this one?
Absolutely.
Remember stamps?
All right. See you there, Mikey.
Move it down a little bit.
You're gonna walk on the other side?
Yeah, I guess.
Those are the Mylars?
Yes.
They're material from that Dudley, doesn't it?
What's that?
Thing from that Dudley.
Yeah, they're up on the childhood side of Dudley. What they do is they crush the ledge out.
We have it out of the shop.
So what they do is, they don't, there's no sand in it.
No.
It's all grinds now.
No, not sharp.
They pay a little more money for it, but when the flowers come down, they just move it off.
Is it, is it ledge or shale?
It's shale, shale's a, it's all ledge, but all the filings go in it.
Okay. You mean, is it?
That's what we have it, I got.
Yeah, it's best.
For the cranes.
You didn't have that stuff.
I think we're four feet deep.
Well, that way there you never could.
Yeah, they didn't screw it out.
Well, we have to.
Some places it's foot. Where we harden all the loose material, some places it's four, just where the material are. It's all the good base below them. We just put it on top, bind it all up.
Is that you, Les Stevens, or is that Zoeker? Who's the scribble?
Mike's above me, that's it, that's Jake.
And that's me.
That's you.
So who's missing? One, two, three, four.
Oh, Ernie can sign.
Ernie tonight.
Ernie already signed.
One, two, three. What are you guys trying to figure out?
No, no.
Signatures also?
Aaron, Aaron, you wanna sign this?
Oh, yeah.
We're not, we're not on that gender item, we're still on this. Come on. Mike, Mike's adding up the numbers and he's, he's like a five.
It wasn't computing, Aaron.
Yeah.
We haven't come in four or five loads a year just to pop off.
Can't beat the stuff.
Yeah. The regrind's come a long way, too.
Yeah, but that stuff still moves.
Yeah, it depends on when you get it.
Thank you.
You stamp on the other side?
Yeah, you get it during the summer, it's nice.
Oh, yeah. You can't wait till you have some lands and stuff. Cool.
Thank you, David. Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Don't we keep those?
We keep those. I gotta sign those in.
Yeah, so these are the, these are the paper ones.
Yep, we're good.
The Mylars I take.
You take the Mylars, we keep this one.
Take your Mylars.
Bring them up to the registry. Throw them in the bucket.
Might still need them.
I know.
Keep it out. How do you get more juice through these things?
You ask Maria.
Okay.
You quit, you quit, you quit over stamping. Use a Sharpie or something. Aaron's working there. Handing out farm tickets. I'm Aaron. Call that extra one. Put it in A and R. What are you doing? You want me to stamp it, Jake?
You're like losing ink everywhere, so I stamp like smudge everywhere. Oh, I'm recused. Just wait for buildings to come back.
There's a good discussion here with Adam. There's a good discussion today with Adam. I mean, there's two issues we need to address. Which, you mean, which is not allowing people to break out?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and the, what else?
You don't see Jay anymore. They still with that outfit?
Yeah, he is. He's the first guy.
Just depending on what the issue is.
All right, next item on the agenda. I like this guy better. A and R Plan, Aaron Sokrat, forty-nine Lindberg Avenue.
Right on the table over there. Byron, don't be shy.
Okay.
We let the last guy do it.
We have one paper. Can you touch it a little bit?
You might not know, Byron, we only get one sheet paper now.
What's that?
Yeah, we're trying to see some trees.
Oh.
Oh, okay. You can have the extras.
Usually I make the smaller size. I didn't have a chance to do that tonight.
Yeah, we got two.
We got it in.
Okay. Okay, so, good evening, my name is Byron Andrews, I'm with the Andrews Survey and Engineering, and we're presenting Aaron Sokrat tonight. Aaron owns the property here on this copy I've outlined at Warren. What he's looking to do is cut it into three buildable parcels. One parcel would be for the existing house, that would be this one here. And these two would be buildable parcels right here and here. The lots have adequate frontage and area for the zone. There are some challenges with the, with the site, which is two things. In particular, there are wetlands, shown here in green. Also, there is, this area shows in a flood district. The flood district on the, on the map covers the whole property. However, we've done a survey, we've done topographic measurements. We have an elevation for the flood zone, which we determined and was certified by FEMA for another parcel that we did on the lake. We showed that line here in blue. So both lots have buildable areas. One is right here, down near the end. The other one for Lot Two is right here. We looked at it very closely to make sure that we had enough area to put a house on and the greater than the center system. I'd say we, we had some challenges going into it, so we were very careful about making sure that they are feasible lots. This lot here has eleven percent slopes in the beginning of the lot. We feel that with grading, when we put the house in, we can reduce that down quite a bit. This lot here, although it has side slopes, the, the slopes perpendicular to the street line are actually only like about one percent.
There's three lots in there?
Uh, there would be three lots.
And they all have frontage on, two of them it looks like on Southwest Main, where's the third one?
Uh, they all have frontage on Southwest Main Street.
There's three, okay, one, two.
It's like sixteen hundred feet there.
Yeah, there's, so, frontage distance. So this lot with Aaron's existing house would have two hundred feet of frontage. Both of these would have, this one has three hundred and twenty-eight feet. This one has six hundred and forty-three feet almost of frontage.
And it's out of the flood zone now.
It's out of the flood zone, it's officially been removed.
That took us about forty-five, fifty days.
So if you look at this color map, the blue area that looks kinda like water, that's what the flood plain used to be. The blue line is where they demonstrated to FEMA that it got moved to. It's in your pocket.
Forty-five days. Shorter than I expected.
At least that. Well, that's after they, you know, obviously received it and all.
I think it would've been like, it would've been in a year or two.
They send you a letter and they say it has to be thirty to sixty days. They have to do it within sixty, I think.
That's a pretty good average, though.
Yeah. It's like, tell us something. So the, the blue line moved off of where they were.
So this, this blue hatched area is where it used to be. So this is where it currently is, based on what Byron submitted.
What's, what's the building footprint for the, for the house sizes? Is it available?
Uh, gosh, I forgot what the building footprint was. I know we, we worked on, they're smaller houses. They're not, they're not, you know, big mansions. But they are feasible marketable lots.
Anybody else have any questions? Bill, any questions?
I'm noticing you didn't get my comments on the last one or this one?
We haven't gone over them yet.
No, I don't think they're in the packet.
Yeah, so that's why I'm like...
Yeah, which is surprising. Anyways, the comments that I had are not much different than the last one. The only difference, I think, is the flood plain. There's, there's the street, steep slopes again, okay? And again, that's an access question that the board has to address. And one of the lots, Byron, can you point out which one has inadequate site distance?
The, that would be this one right here. Site distance in this direction coming from Nagin. Is limited by the, the slope of the road. There's a hump in the road right there, and you have trouble seeing over it. So the site distance is only a hundred and seventy-five feet. The required site distance in that zone for a thirty mile an hour zone is two hundred feet. So it's about twenty-five feet short of what's required by ASHTO.
But we'll improve, we can prove on that. I mean, we can take care of that during the time.
That indoor, does it get posted? Line driveway?
Yeah. Would you be willing to put up a?
Of course. It might be, it might be a sign there already.
Well, there's no driveway there, so.
Put the other guys.
Yeah.
No, cause there's, there's the guy with the, um, big barn, horse barn in the back.
Oh, he's down the hill, yeah.
It's all sharp corners.
I mean, what would be the more feasible way? A postage, I mean, a sign postage? For a line driveway, you think, would be the best way to go?
By the highway?
Depends on much site work you wouldn't have to do to make it work.
You gotta take the hell out of the road.
Yeah.
You ain't gonna do that.
No. No.
No, I thought you said they can take care of it with site work.
How?
Well, it depends on if the driveway, I don't know, we had a conversation on this, and Byron would know best on this. But we can certainly put up a sign, that's not a problem.
I think, I think a sign works.
At least get a sign up, and then if you can improve it better.
Yeah.
You know? Don't wanna get T-boned coming out of your own driveway. Thanks for a bad commute in the morning.
Yeah. Bill, any other?
No, that's it. Otherwise, Byron addressed my comments.
Right turn only.
Boyd, any further questions?
Yeah, the slopes he's talking about.
Yeah.
Only come into play really if you're gonna, if you have a driveway there, right?
No, you gotta, you gotta work the land and stuff like that, it's just how it, it exists today.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the issue, the real issue.
The way the A and R case law has come down is, are these lot, the board can consider accessibility to the buildable portion of the lots. Okay, so if they have guardrail across the frontage, or if they have a steep cliff, or if they have ledge outcroppings. These things the board can use to say, hey, that's an impediment to the accessibility to the buildable portion of this lot, so we're refusing endorsement. Okay, that's been upheld in court. That's the only reason this comes up is accessibility. So the board can weigh it however they want to.
They give you a mountain or just vertical.
Railings all along the thing, highway railings.
I'm curious about the...
You don't have that.
Site, what'd you call it, the site distance?
Site distance.
Uh, is, and is there a guideline?
He, he used ASHTO, right? He used ASHTO, yes.
Two hundred versus one seventy-five.
I got like about ten feet. I don't know how the hell they built the house I have. And it was built in two thousand. I'm on the side of a hill, right over a hill, I'm on the side of a hill.
That's before I worked here, man. What can I tell you?
What do you think, you have an sign and any improvements that can be done?
Two thousand, you said?
Would be relevant.
Absolutely.
Go through the highway department. I mean...
It'll get finessed.
Yeah, with that, I mean, I'm happy.
Someone will make a motion?
Make a motion to endorse A and R Plan for Aaron Sokrat at forty-nine Lindberg Ave. With the, would be an amendment?
No, you can't, you can't condition.
Okay.
Second? Motion made by Mike Zee, seconded by Les, and further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. I feel like it shows Tracy Wood's absence.
That's perfect.
Standing on Mylars?
Yeah.
You wanna stamp this one?
Stamp Jake.
No.
Did you want that one?
We only need one of these, so he can take the rest of them.
Okay. We have, is that the one we want?
Sure, yeah, we already started stamping away.
That's the Mylar?
I get out of here before midnight.
Little violation, man.
Sorry, it's in the line.
No, I want my line. See that right there?
Lucky I make them do a half inch spacing. How many times I have to make them go back and change that?
This is the one you can write on, huh?
Yeah.
Only one?
Yep, only one. New standard, Mike.
Oh, you want the Mylars?
You like that?
I like it, but we just did two for the other guy.
Well, that was two sheets though, they had.
They have two sheets.
Oh.
Two, four.
Oh, that came out pretty good, all right.
Yeah.
No, who's this? We're past the hour.
No, that's, that's a filth.
That's all good.
Hayward Homes. I don't know.
You wanna do that? That's Byron. Byron might have that. Yeah, there he is.
Byron, you in Hayward too?
Hayward too, yeah.
Wait a second, do I pay half?
No flies on Aaron.
I've been there before, I've been before zoning.
There's another one here, that one's going dry.
Can I get a Mylar?
This is okay, there's two of them here, one of them about, about to work.
Yeah, this is the one.
Okay. It was only two, you were only doing two ones.
Yeah, yeah, so now we're splitting it to three, three was put the, somewhere in there, so.
Everybody sign this one already?
That's familiar.
Everybody sign this one?
Yes, sir.
So you weren't here before two thousand?
Correct. Well, I was here, what, August, September is when I started.
Oh, okay.
I know.
That's kinda when we moved in.
You only need one now, huh?
That's great.
Yeah. So, it was somewhere before that.
It's not my fault.
I know. I got ten, about ten feet one way, and then the other way there's the world's biggest boulder. It's about twenty, thirty.
So you take your life in your hands every time? Which street is it?
Uh, south, southeast Main.
Did everybody get that?
But you might need to talk to the town, that might be the town boulder.
That is the mother of all boulders.
Yeah, it is the town boulder.
It might be a town boulder.
I think.
I'd have to talk to the town about moving that boulder.
Yes. Ernie's on it.
Yeah. I don't think there's a piece of equipment in this town capable of moving that rock. It is huge.
I had that one moved.
The one by your house?
Yeah, yeah, we drilled it.
We drilled it.
It's got a explosive up. We drilled it and broke a piece off, is what we did. It used to stick out in the road.
Oh, really?
It's the mother of a rock, right, if you had to get that out of there?
Uh, I, I, no, we got nothing at the highway department, we'll move that. You had to drill it and blast it.
The mother of all boulders.
Really?
There's a few of them.
Aaron's back with us.
I'm talking.
Okay, Aaron, let, yeah, let the record show Aaron's back. Let the record show that Aaron recused himself for this.
Should we get that in the minutes?
Yes, that should be in the minutes.[1587.14] May, anything else, Byron? The next one too?
Yeah.
Alright, A and R plan for Hayward Homes LLC, twenty-seven Webster Street, okay.
Good evening, my name is Byron Andrews with Andrew Sir and Engineering, representing Hayward Homes. These plans may look familiar, we were before the board earlier this year.
Is this as verbana's?
Yep.
Okay. Is this, oh, you could, you got the other side just.
Thank you.
This is revised on the one we got in our packet?
It is.
It is.
Got a yellow line in here too.
That's the way it was done before.
Was it two yellow lines, wasn't it?
Was it two yellow lines before? You created two lots.
Yeah, the previous plan that you'd be familiar with is this whole piece here. Which was three buildable lots.
Hold on.
Thanks for the call, Coach.
Which way is Douglas?
Okay.
This way, so you're coming toward Webster.
You're going towards Webster, yeah.
Oh, you're going.
Yeah, you turn, you turn right, you're going towards Webster's right there, well, that stretch right there. Okay, we all set, Phil? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Byron.
So the, you, you, the plan that you'll be familiar with was this entire property here. We did it for Patricia Manning earlier this year. Hayward Homes bought the two middle lots, which are divided by this line, so this is one lot, this is another lot at present. And what we'd like to do is divide it, change it between two lots to make it three lots. The zoning there only requires a hundred feet of frontage and twenty thousand square feet, it's a village residential district. So you, you know, you have the capability to do that. All of these lots would have adequate frontage, two would have one hundred, and one would have almost two hundred. And they would all have thirty-one thousand square feet. Total here is, trying to read all my, all my math there, about one acre. And this one has a little, has one acre, so these, these both have about twice as much area as required. This one has the required, about fifty percent more than the required area. They all have, excuse me, adequate frontage for the zone. The only issue is site distance, the site distance in this direction for these two lots is somewhat restricted. The site distance required in that zone is three hundred and sixty feet. This lot has two hundred feet, this has two seventy-five. This lot has adequate site distance in both directions, and both these lots, lots have more than enough site distance heading towards Douglas.
Any state rails?
Uh, there are rails, the rails are between here and here. The access would be just to the west of the rails for this one, and a significant west of the rails on these two. There are also some steep slopes there, but it's only about five feet of slope, so we feel like it would be easily handled, you know, during destruction.
Would you say it was zone?
Uh, village, uh, village residential.
So Byron, you said the sightline distance is, what is it?
It's two hundred feet for this one, two seventy-five for this one.
And that's because of the, the slope of the road and the speed of the road?
Uh, yeah, it's because of the, the speed, it's, it's under what's required for the, for that zone.
The forty, forty-five.
Is it forty-five?
I think it's forty-five.
Yeah, okay, I didn't think it was that, that fast, that quick there.
Yeah, it does slow down. From forty down to forty-five?
I know, I just thought it was slowing down.
The whole road's forty-five.
Going up, then you go down.
Yeah, yeah, the speed limit.
Oh, the speed limit.
The whole road's forty-five.
Is it, as soon as you turn on it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Coming from Webster's on that shop, kinda where all the houses are, isn't that where you do?
I'm sure, I'm sure they checked it, and that's how they.
Yeah, no, I didn't know it was forty-five.
But yeah, it's pretty much forty-five the whole way.
I didn't know that.
Where it starts, it's, it's, I think.
Okay, Bill?
I think, the first thing, I think the application was deficient by fifty dollars.
I have a check here. We're more sure about the, about what was required for the check. I haven't filled it out yet because I didn't know if you want the fifty dollars that's deficient, or if you want a new check for the total.
No, just to supplement it with the fifty dollars would be fine. And then outside of that, he addressed all the comments I had, regulatory comments I had. The only issue is, and it's for the board, is the site distance on those two lots and the slopes on two lots, correct?
I think it should be the same thing with signage.
Which two, well, originally two lots, but now it's three lots, right?
Correct.
The two that he's worried about are?
The two lots with the site distance.
The two original.
Actually, it would have been just one of the original lots.
One of the original.
Whether it'll, this lot as originally configured had two hundred and seventy-five foot site heading towards Webster. The entrance for this one would be in the same location, so it's still two hundred and seventy-five. This one's, this one would be a little more restrictive than that.
He said two hundred, had two hundred?
Two hundred.
Somebody's, you know, caution blind drive?
Again, you know, I want to caution the board, we can't.
I know.
We can't put conditions or restrictions on it.
What, what would you recommend, I guess, to mediate anything like that, Byron, I was probably.
Then what do you do?
You make a judgment call, I mean, you, he could walk, he could make every promise in the book and walk out of here and do none of it. And that's often what happens, because he's the engineer and the guy building, it's a different guy, and he's not gonna know, and you know.
Yeah, we can't condition.
No.
If, well, shouldn't ask much, but if there were two lots versus three, would the second lot have adequate? Like both lots be adequate? Or does a street exacerbate the situation?
The, the third lot is, it, the third lot is a little worse than the second lot. The second lot, of course, was already approved by the board earlier this year with two hundred and seventy-five, so this one would have two hundred. Other than that, the site distance in this direction is.
And the requirement is what again?
Three.
Three sixty.
Three sixty.
Three sixty? I thought it was three hundred.
Just slipped my nuts, got three sixty.
That's like fifty percent.
That's, yeah, that's what I mean, that's a big difference.
Yeah, they had to build the lots, and they're trying to squeeze the third one now, right?
Yeah, if you did have the third, then.
Well, dimensionally, they could, in all fairness, dimensionally, they, they can't.
Correct, dimension, but the.
Yeah.
Your issue is the line of sight. What was, what was the line of sight for the original two parcels, for our education or our refresher?
I think it was two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, ripos.
Uh, this one here.
One of them was fine.
This meets the requirements, it has about five hundred feet.
Okay.
Four hundred in this direction. This one, which was already approved, would be using the same entrance.
Two seventy-five.
Has five hundred in this direction, two seventy-five in that direction.
Right. A two seventy-five out of three sixty versus two hundred five out of three sixty.
And now, now with the creating of the third lot, you've got one of them with just two hundred.
Right.
And you're supposed to be at three sixty. What do you mean?
Of course, that's at the, at the jurisdiction, I mean, that's at the, the opinion of the board. Again, it does have adequate access, it's just a matter of how you want to judge the site distance.
I think, I think it's a fast road. Forty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, it's a tough call, because to be approved two seventy-five, but now it's two hundred with a third, and that is kinda.
It's dropping it.
Yeah, you're cutting into, I just want to look at the percentage of that, what that is. I took in like two hundred versus. Forty-five percent.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? You're only meeting fifty, yeah, you're only meeting fifty-five percent.
Okay, it's bad.
Fifty-five percent of what they're recommending, so, I mean, when you're at.
Fifty-five percent.
Yeah, and so, when you're at two seventy-five and give that three sixty, you know, you're at seventy-five percent. I mean, it, it, it's a twenty percent drop, you know what I mean, and it's fifty-five percent. You know, you were, you were meeting it at seventy, seventy-six, I think, we were comfortable with that. When it was at two seventy-five, seventy-six percent of the sightline.
The one we just did?
This one.
This one.
Yeah.
I know we can't condition stuff, you know how I feel, and nothing's being offered, so. Kind of, it's too much of a draw.
Yeah.
I personally, I, I would hate to pull out of that driveway if it was me.
Yeah.
I drive that road every day, and I, and I know where that lot is, I look at that, and I can't picture a driveway going in there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the only way to, you have to make a motion, and if it doesn't get approved, then.
What was the one?
Well, well, before we make any action, I'll offer to Byron, is there any way you could get out there and do anything to approve that at this point? Whether it's cut a tree down, or, you know, maybe do some grading on the access to knock a hill down, or, you know, I don't know. Because that, it, it sounds like the board's primarily hung up on the site distance issue.
I think we probably could, I'd have to examine it myself, I wasn't out here today, I had a survey crew out there. But I'd be happy to go out there, take a look at it myself, see if there's any recommendations we can have in terms of if there are any trees in the way, or if there's a, you know, if there's some way to grade, some way to grade the driveway to improve that.
Location of the driveway somewhere on the, on the, on the frontage, you know.
Yeah, maybe that we could, you know, move the driveway a little bit one way.
Get a little more site distance.
Or Byron, even, even your property lines coming towards the street, turning those slightly to maybe pick up a better, anybody, if you're, I think you just.
It's just like a hump right on the road to the street.
Yeah, it's right where the hump is, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so is it the hump that's limiting the site distance?
Yeah, because if you, if you're driving west, you, there's a hump there, and cars just, whoop, just like that, there's a car right there on top of the hill. You don't, you can't see the car coming any further west.
It, it goes up, and then it goes down and back up again.
So, so chances are that he won't be able to physically do anything to improve that?
I, I can't say for sure they couldn't, you might be able, you might be able to do some cutting and, and, and give them a better.
Or even tweak it something.
Because they'll be coming, they'll be coming down. It's not, yeah, you'll be, you'll be coming down on that lot probably.
Yeah.
From above, so you might be able to get that sightline distance, if you do some clearing, and you can see down into that little hall.
I mean, you, you've got a hundred and, a hundred and ninety-seven feet on a lot.
On the other one of them.
Lot D.
Take some of that.
Parcel D. I mean, I think you can look at cutting the property line, open that sightline up for that. So I think there's some things that can be done here.
So you pull it over to the right more, you establish.
That's what you were just saying.
Cut it like this a little bit. See if you can get a driveway in where it could meet that two seventy-five that's already approved.
Or, or improve it better than fifty-five percent.
Too, so it's not like it could impact.
You have the frontage.
Frontage, plenty of, plenty of frontage.
Yeah, we can take a look at between the, between, you know, possibly shifting the lot lines, grading, and, you know, brush or tree removal, we can take a look and see how we can improve that.
So, if that's the case, then I'll need, if you want, to request a withdrawal?
Yeah.
Do you want to waive a reapplication fee?
Well, where's that?
For only dealing with this site distance issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Isn't that goodbye?
Yeah. Are you sure you give him a, get a check?
Yeah, don't go anywhere.
You'll bill a check plus you gotta write a note.
Yeah, he's gonna withdraw what Elbridge is.
Yeah.
Was that?
That's a little bit.
Yeah, just leave him there.
Yeah. That, that, that's.
I was looking for passing grades, like fifty-five's not a three.
I wish, like when we did the other one, before I knew exactly where it was, like, thought of it before, because that's a tough one for a driveway.
But that's a slow road.
It should, that should be forty.
On, 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 let's go? No.
Yeah, we're having this kind of situation. Beforehand, yes, one.
Power, Bosma cell tower?
Uh, in your to be signed folder, you should have a new surety form, or an old cell tower that's over on Bosma's on northeast Main Street. I'm not sure if they're switching companies or what, what's going on.
Yeah, it's a different name, I think, yeah.
But I'm gonna need the board to sign the surety agreement, that's in the to be signed folder. So you should vote to accept it and sign it. It's been reviewed by town council.
Re-eared by town council?
Yeah.
Make a motion?
You need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Need a motion for what, changing?
Accept the.
Accepting the new, uh.
Surety.
Bond agreement for Bosma's cell tower for four thirty-six.
Yep.
For forty in northeast Main Street.
Yes.
Second? Zee, in.
Second?
Less seconded it is. All of the favor?
Aye.
Do I need the accessory apartment?
And we'll sign that at the end of the night.
Yeah. We can buy it.
I see one.
Accessory apartment special permit. Valley Real Estate Management LLC, seven Mechanics Street.
No, it's only one in here.
There's only one.
You must only have it then.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the to be signed.
Good.
We'll pass it around at the other meeting.
We only have one accessory, so you know.
Thank you. I'll bring it up.
No, do number two.
Want to make a sign after?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll send them all at the end, we'll prove them all, and we'll sign them at the end.
Yeah, but we only have one.
You only have one what?
In the package, you only copied one in your packet. There's two, it sounds like there's two in the to be signed folders.
Should be one, two, three.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, ready to go?
Yeah, there's, oh, there's only one in the back of it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Valley Real Estate Management LLC, seven Mechanics Street, for the accessory apartment permit.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Les, seconded by Mike Zee, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
We don't have a copy of everyone's look at.
This was the first day.
Alright, accessory apartment special permit. Mary McGuire, thirty-one Royal Crest.
We have that.
Yep.
You have that? I think it's.
Green Oldville?
Four twenty. This is the one we're all across again.
Yep.
Yeah, we just did Mechanics Street last time.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
It's just protocol.
Yeah, speed on our taxes here?
Yeah, it wouldn't have came before us without me approving our taxes, right?
Yeah, it would not have.
They paid?
Made it to us.
I can't answer it.
So we need a more, motion approved.
I can't answer it.
They accessory prob.
We, we know.
You can't answer?
It's on the back, it says.
I can go for the.
It's right there.
It's on the back.
There you go.
Okay, well, I asked you if you knew.
I did?
Pay up card, signed it.
No, the back.
Ask Phil if he did.
Okay. So, we make a motion to accept the, accessory apartment special permit renewal for Mary Lou McGuire, thirty-one Royal Crest Drive.
Thank you, Byron.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Zee, seconded by Aaron, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion carries. Okay. Alright, here we are, we.
Four, it's done.
Yeah, why is this on there again?
We already did.
To be signed.
To be signed.
That's why.
Minutes.
We already proved it, yeah.
To the minutes, take it away there.
Mike?
Meeting, yep, Mike, meeting minutes? Yes, for eleven, twelve.
November twelfth.
Did I see it, Byron?
Page three.
Oh, page three.
Look down the middle of the page, there's number twelve.
Yep. Old business.
Two lines above the number twelve, it says, meeting minutes as amended for October twenty-second, actually, that's, should be as written.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Because we didn't amend anything.
Right.
Okay.
So noted. Then, oh, okay, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Number twelve, one, two, three, four, fourth sentence, says, before they do, they work. I think it should be their work or their work.
Before they do.
She's a good catch, then, Mike. Okay. Webster would be happy.
We need a new adult in the same district?
That's what Tracy said.
Before they do their work.
Their work.
Oh, because the ones in the forest?
Yeah. That's how I have it, yeah.
There you go. Anybody else have anything?